Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, thank you. First, we have Committee of the Whole closed meeting.
Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Stroud, that council resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole closed meeting to consider the following items: A, Labor Relations or Employee Negotiations, Ontario Nurses Association; B, Litigation or Potential Litigation Including Matters Before Administrative Tribunals Affecting the Municipality and Advice That Is Subject to Solicitor Client Privilege, Including Communications Necessary for That Purpose, Application to the Human Rights Tribunal of Ontario; C, Proposed or Pending Acquisition of Land by the Municipality, 85 First Avenue. Councillor Stroud, do you have a pecuniary on the first item?
I do.
Okay.
So, we would just put another name in there. We'll put councillor O'Sanex's name in as a seconder. Is councillor Holland signed out? Can everyone just vote one more time, please? Oh, is she signed in?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe she was waiting on a conference call.
Can we just sign her out? Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, is that good, or we need to do that vote again?
No.
Okay, so, we're going to re-vote one more time. We'll just wait for that to come back on our screens. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. We were just meeting in Committee of the Whole closed meeting. We discussed several items, including labor relations, litigation or potential litigation regarding an application to the Human Rights Tribunal, and a proposed or pending acquisition of land, 85 First Avenue. So, I will ask for a motion to waive the rules and have the clerk report, please.
Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Turner, that council rise from the Committee of the Whole closed meeting and that the rules of bylaw number 2010-1 be waived in the clerk report.
And that carries.
Okay. Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Turner, that council ratify the collective agreement between the Corporation of the City of Kingston and the Ontario Nurses Association for the period from April 1st, 2016, to March 31st, 2018.
Councillor Stroud, you just... Yeah. So, you can sign out now, and then we'll have you declare that conflict, sure. Can we just do a re-vote? And that carries. Okay, so, moving on to approval of the addits, we have two addits. One is an additional item for report number 104, the report from the Integrity Commissioner. We have a new motion. And on the second addits, we have a motion of congratulations and some communication. Councillor Neil?
Yes, I've spoken to my seconder, and the motion regarding 671 Brock and the closure of Napier Street for additional parkland, because that isn't time-sensitive, my seconder has agreed that we should have that as a notice of motion, rather than on the addits. That way, if people in the neighborhood wish to express any concerns they might have, they have a two-week window to do that.
Okay, so, if the mover and seconder are in agreement, we will withdraw new motion number five. So, we will vote on the addits together, noting that one withdrawal. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Turner. And that carries. Are there any disclosures to potential pecuniary interest? Deputy Mayor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I, Ryan Bohm, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of report number 106, motion number four. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a pecuniary interest in this matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stroud?
I, Peter Stroud, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Close Meeting 1A ONA negotiations, as I am a member of ONA.
Thank you. Councillor Camden?
I, Adam Camden, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of report number 104, motion number one, as I have expressed interest in creating affordable housing units through a company that I own.
Councillor Neil?
Yes, I, Jim Neil, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 1, Report Number 105, from the Planning Committee, since I own a property at 707 Alfred Street adjoining to the 70 Barbara Avenue development.
Thank you. Are there any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. We do have one presentation this evening. Michelle Langlois, General Manager, Director of Marketing Downtown Kingston BIA, and Sandy Wilson of Alexander Wilson Architects will present council with a frame set of the limited edition 2015 Peter collection and announce the 2016 Peter collection.
There you are. Thank you for welcoming us here tonight. Michelle is to my right. My name is Sandy Wilson. I'm an architect in Kingston. I've had a firm here since 1988. I was with the BIA for about 13 years, Michelle, as an elected member, and I've been on the Board of Directors at Huxaldue Hospital now for about a year and a half. I really believe in Kingston. I really believe in what the BIA is doing to enhance Kingston and to represent our history. Downtown Kingston is proud to announce that 2006 marks the 23rd anniversary of the limited edition Peter Collectibles program. Each holiday season, five of Kingston's most beloved and well-known landmarks are selected to be cast as holiday Peter ornaments. It's a chance to celebrate the wide array of local properties that are rich with historic value. This program has been and continues to be tremendously popular with Kingstonians, previous residents, and tourists to the city. Each ornament has a value of over $200... Sorry, $20. Can't give away that cheaply, but is made available to everyone for only $10 each upon a presentation of $25 worth of receipts from any downtown business. Expert opinions are coupled with valuable public input during the building selection process. The committee does its best to ensure each year's collection is balanced, attractive, and representative of the sites we have to choose from in Kingston. And so, Michelle, it's over to you. The winners.
The winners. I don't actually view them as winners, but... So, this year's collection will be launched on Monday, November 14, and then one ornament a week each Monday is released, and the final one will be on December 12. This year's group is... First one will be Portsmouth Tavern on Young Street, St. John the Apostle Catholic Church, which is on Patrick Street, Vandevort General Store, which is on Princess, I'm sure most are familiar with it, the RCHA Club Building at the corner of Ontario and Clarence, and finally, replica of the tragically hip commemorative stone that's going to be placed in Market Square. And as Sandy mentioned, each ornament is available for only $10 upon presentation of $25 worth of receipts from downtown businesses, and that includes all businesses. It could be a receipt from your dentist, or 25 days' worth of coffee. The ornaments are available for sale at the Visitor Information Centre, the Rogers K-Rock Centre box office, as well as the Grand Theatre. If you want to know anything else, you can visit downtownkingston.ca. And then, in celebration of all of this history, et cetera, and I'm not sure there's room left in City Hall, but we have another frame set from 2015 that we'd like to present to mayor and council.
Michelle, I think you should have the honors.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no delegations this evening, but... So, we'll move on. We do have one briefing. Deb Skeef, Director of Residential Long-Term Care at Rita Crest, Christine Monk, Registered Practical Nurse, and Laureen King McGill, Rita Crest Home Family Council Member, will provide a briefing with respect to information report number three, Rita Crest Home Accreditation
Good evening, Mayor, council, and ladies and gentlemen of the public. Rita Crest Home has been preparing for a full accreditation since the primer took place in September 2014. From the primer report, the home set goals and put quality improvement initiatives in place to ensure that full accreditation... We were set for full accreditation for September 2016. Four large focus areas of the rigorous preparation and inspection processes are leadership, infection control, medication management, and long-term care services. Interdisciplinary teams were formed over the past two years to focus on initiatives to ensure that all areas were works in progress or completed. More attention was placed in areas of improvement outlined in the 2014 primer report. The preparation process also included surveys to both residents and staff to gain insight into their quality of life, likes, dislikes, and work-life balance. From these surveys, action plans were developed and followed up to ensure that full circle communication on quality improvements was taking place in the home. Overall, the findings of the report were immensely complimentary of the home, including the improvements that have been made since the primer report of 2014, and the culture change that was taking place. The surveyors noted a broad involvement from the entire corporation within the operations of Rita Crest Home, which included meetings with the mayor, the CAO, the commissionaire, human resources, financial services, and facilities management and construction services. The surveyors were very pleased with the positive feedback from the family council, resident council, and our community partners. It is my pleasure tonight to announce that on September 27, 2016, Rita Crest Home received accreditation with commendation, which surpasses the fundamental requirements of the Accreditation Canada program. The process of accreditation is ongoing, and the home will work to recertify every four years to ensure that practices and quality of care remain at a standard of excellence. Reaching a level of accreditation with commendation is not done without the participation of those that live, work, and play at Rita Crest Home. With that being said, I would like to introduce you to Laureen King McGill, who is the daughter of one of our residents at Rita Crest Home, and Christine Monk, an RPN, who works at our home. And they would like to say a few words. Laureen?
First of all, I want to congratulate the administrator, Deb Skeef, the directors and supervisors, and the staff of the nursing home on achieving such an improved and positive accreditation status. My mother has been a resident of Rita Crest for five years. Over that period of time, we've seen a lot of changes. Today, I'm here to comment on the positive changes I've seen over the past two years from a family's perspective. The business office has shown a dramatic improvement in establishing and following procedures. After I have struggled with incorrect billings and compounded errors, it has been such a relief, over the past two years, to have mum's account correctly administered and to receive the billings on time and completed correctly. The receptionist that greets the people is, as always, knowledgeable, friendly, and helpful. She gives a warm first impression, and along with her other duties, has been invaluable in assisting family members and the public. While my mother chooses not to take part in many of the activities in the home, she has enjoyed the ones in which she has participated. I often see other residents taking part in a wide variety of events. The staff is enthusiastic, involved, and inventive. They are truly a large part of what makes Rita Crest enjoyable. There have been a number of upgrades to the home over the past two years, which has improved the look, functionality, and overall feel of the building. Each of these is much appreciated by the residents and their families. There are many comfortable sitting areas inside and out that provide residents and their visitors with a place to visit outside of their individual rooms. This has helped to remove the institutional feel of the building. The administrator, Deb Skeef, has always been approachable and interested in addressing and improving areas of concern. She listens, she takes notes, and more importantly, always follows through with problem resolution in a timely manner. This has been much appreciated. Last but not least is the nursing department. There have been considerable welcome changes over the past couple of years by Casey Keyes, the Director of Care. One of most important is the appointing of two Assistant Directors of Care. Each of these positions supervises two floors. Since this has been in place, we have noticed a dramatic improvement in the quality of nursing care. No longer is it difficult to find a staff member on the floor. The short staffing problem seems to be resolved. The staff morale always seems improved. There are clear guidelines for care, and therefore consistency for the residents. Since my mother has dementia, this has been an important improvement for her. I have noticed a more resident-centered approach from the staff, which greatly increases my mother's contentment. My mother and our family appreciate the effort that the Rita Crest staff has made over the past two years to improve the quality of care and the quality of life for her and the rest of the residents. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, fellow councils. It's reassuring hearing the positive feedback from family members. Thank you, Laureen. As a staff member working the floor, I feel over the past couple of years has been a huge improvement with the support received from the visibility of the management on the floor. This is evident by the quality of care being provided to our residents, the increase in teamwork amongst the entire staff, and positive acknowledgement, both verbally and written, received from our families. I am proud to be part of the Rita Crest team and looking forward to what the future holds for Rita Crest and our residents.
Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Yes, councillor Hutchinson?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to say congratulations, and it is moving to hear that you got that accreditation. When I first started as a councillor 10 years ago, it was not like that, and I got a lot of complaints. And it's so good to hear that these improvements are done, so I congratulate all the staff and the city staff that are in charge of the overall governance, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, but thank you for that, councillor Hutchinson, and definitely congratulations again to the whole team at Rita Crest. That's great.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. So, we will... We'll move on. Are there any petitions to present? Councillor Neil?
Yes. Last week, at our last council meeting, I submitted a petition with 969 signatures from the Sunnyside Neighborhood Parkland Petition. Not going to reread the petition, other than to say that even though the petition drive ended at that meeting, we've had an additional 41 signatures turned in, so I'm happy to say that there's now 1,010 names on that particular petition, and I'll submit this to be added.
Thank you. Are there any other petitions to present? Okay, seeing none. We do have one motion of congratulations. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Stroud, that Kingston City Council congratulate Patricia Bovee on her appointment to the Canadian Senate representing Manitoba. Pat worked as a former director of the Winnipeg Art Gallery and Greater Victoria Art Gallery. She is also the sister of former City Councilor Bill Glover. Still one person to vote. And that carries. We have no deferred motions, so I will ask for report 103 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor O'Sanex, seconded by councillor Turner, that report number 103 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So, there are just the two clauses. Would anyone like a separation? Seeing none, we will vote on them together. Item A is fire dispatch service agreements, the Corporation of the Township of Central Frontenac and the Corporation of the Township of South Frontenac, and item B, request for noise exemption, Ministry of Transportation, Highway 401. And that carries. Report number 104 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Hutchinson, that report number 104 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So, Clause 1 is the five-year municipal affordable housing program review. Call the vote. Councillor Hutchinson?
Just one question. What I noticed here is on the Affordable Housing and Land Acquisition Disposition Program, it, I believe, and I can be corrected on this, but originally, we were funding that at $5 million over the five-year, previous five-year period, and I was wondering why it was dropped down to $3 million.
Mr. Leaven?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The main reason is just because of the length of time and complexity of trying to disperse a property and develop it appropriately, that staff felt that $3 million over five years was a more sustainable amount of money to be able to expend over that time period to allow for appropriate development period.
But if it was $5 million, wouldn't that give you more flexibility? And, I mean, I don't think we're jumping up and down to get you to spend it if you don't have a good place to put it. So, would it not give you greater flexibility and opportunity, since you can't really predetermine how much the properties are going to cost? And I'll just add here that if the answer is something to do with we have other priorities otherwise, that might be fine. I would just like to know what they are, and maybe they're overall budget considerations. I don't know.
Who would like to answer that? CEO Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, the... There is funding currently being carried forward in the works in progress on this file that amounts to approximately $2 million. So, the additional top-up of the $3 million that's in this report will bring the fund back up to about $5 million. We believe that if there is opportunity beyond that that comes to the table, we would be able to come back on a one-off report and address that with council.
That sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we seem to have some technical difficulties with councillor Neil's microphone.
Thank you, councillor McLaren. I guess my concern is similar to the previous speaker. We have, I don't think, had a lot of difficulty in utilizing that fund over the last few years. We've heard from both the provincial and the federal government that they anticipate more monies being made available for affordable housing. I guess my concern is, are we going to be in a position, and this may be a question for the CAO, to fully utilize any programs that come forward that are seeking matching funding? Do we have enough money in our working reserve fund that those won't be... If, do we have enough money in our working reserve fund that those won't be missed opportunities because the money isn't there as it was over the last five years?
CAO Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there's two funds that are spoken of here. One is the annual five-year allocation of $1 million. It actually goes to developing individual affordable housing units, whatever those particular projects might come forward. The second part of this is the land acquisition fund. We know that there are a couple of deals in the works, but it does take time for the property to be acquired and then put back on the market in a fashion that would enable the process to bring those properties on and then ultimately to building a permit stage. So from a timing perspective, the funding that is here is within the financial framework that we have, recognizing that there's another, a host of other initiatives that have to be funded on other priorities. With respect to whether or not there were matching funds required in future potential announcements from upper levels of government, we typically have not used these funds always for those things. If there are specific requirements for matching funds, we typically analyze that and then bring another report to council with specific financial considerations for council to consider.
I believe that was a yes. We can make it so even at the lower amount. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Stroud?
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. CAO, I just need help with the, just what's in the report about the concept of the 75% rate for the acquisition. And then there's a five-year period. It's not clear from my reading of the recommendation if that's an annual cost or a total cost. So the recommendation is $750,000 over the five-year period and the $3 million, which you've just explained is a top-up to get it to the $5 million. How does that relate to the 75% that's in the report? And how does the math add up?
CAO Hunt?
So this particular land acquisition policy, the way it would work would be a property, if property was acquired at $1 million, it would then be resold at $750,000, in which case there's a 25% compensation or subsidization that would stay with the property in order to support the housing, affordable housing development on that land. Therefore, the net cost to the city after you put the proceeds of sale into the revolving fund, the net cost for every million-dollar transaction is $250,000.
And so the way that you get to $750,000 is three times $250,000 for the $3 million?
That's correct.
It's 25% of $3 million, I guess?
That's correct.
Okay. And that, is that, just for context, is that the same situation as the other file that we'll be considering tonight with the affordable housing piece at 671 Brock? Is that the same situation?
Mr. Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the current policy is the same that would be carried over. The only thing, the only difference or change that we're proposing in terms of the land acquisition disposition policy is in regards to the amount of money. So rather than being $5 million to buy property over five years, we're proposing $3 million over five years. And that's due to the timeframe that it takes to actually usually put property back into the market, if you wish. So I'll state seven right crescent. For those of you who've been involved, it's taken quite some time. So these things don't happen right away. Yes, the concept in terms of the policy is the same that's applicable to the 671 Brock Street, where Kingston-Frontenac Housing Corporation will have to pay basically 75% of the value of that property.
And so there's a 25% liability that the city assumes?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's correct, and that's part of the financial plan that we have.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on item one. Item two is the transmittal of the reports from the interim integrity commissioner. So anyone that wishes to speak to this? Call the vote. Okay. Report Number 105 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present Report Number 105 from the Planning Committee and ask that it be received for council's consideration. Thanks.
Moved by Councilor Shell, seconded by Councilor Neal, that Report Number 105 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted. We will have to vote on items one and two separately. So could I ask for a different seconder, please? Thank you.
Okay, so we have the two clauses. We will vote on them separately because of Councilor Neal's declaration of pecuniary interest. So item one is approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, 70 Barbara Avenue. Councilor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. So this was a close vote at Planning Committee. The residents in the area have expressed through petition and through consultation, both with city staff and through a community meeting with the proponent, that the density proposed through this zoning bylaw amendment is going to have negative impacts on the For that reason, I'm asking council not to support this. A few of the main issues that I think have yet to be resolved have to do with the Our Lady of Fatima Church, which is located on what is this little street called Frey Street, which is not an official street currently, but will be the main access road into the 70 Barbara Development. So there has been a traffic study conducted which indicated that there wouldn't be any negative impacts with 116 units. That would be, the residents in that area would be leaving the development and entering onto Division Street. So while that work has been done, it is certainly the feeling of the parish community at Our Lady of Fatima Church, that church events and festivals that take place in that area had not been considered in this study, that there, that the 11,000 or so members of the congregation of Our Lady of Fatima would not be well-served by the traffic and the inability to access their activities that would come about with this kind of development. So for that reason and a lot of other reasons to do with essentially the density and the scope of this development, it had initially been proposed for 49 stacked townhomes, and it has risen to 116. And the main rationale is that, of course, for someone who owns a property, they're going to make more money with 116 units than with 49. And I don't think that this is in keeping with our principles. While, of course, intensification and infill is really important, and it's a priority that we have as a council, at 116 units, residents of the area deem it to be too large, too dense, and not good for the quality of life in the area. So for those reasons, I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Sannick?
Thank you, Your Worship. I also cannot support this application. It's just too dense. You know, the original zoning was for 49 stacked townhomes. Now it's 116. I found some parts of the report troubling for me, too, because when we had the public meeting, the residents were always talking about the number of trees and what's going to happen to the trees. And when the report goes and addresses the public concerns, it just talks about 50 trees that have a permit, you know, to have been removed for the storm water management pond area. And as you can see, that on the piece of property, there's hundreds of trees that are going to be removed. And I know that comes later at site plan, but I was hoping that the report would have talked to about the hundreds of trees that will have to be removed at site plan, just because of the density going in there. If it was just the 49 stacked homes, stacked townhomes, there would have been more of a chance for those, some of those trees to, you know, still be incorporated into the design, but not with that density that's going there. Also, too, for the layout diagrams, I know that, you know, the proponent can say, oh, these are just concepts, subject to change, but you can see how nice airy open it is. We have the backyards, the fence line of the backyards of the homes on Alfred Street, three meters from this corner. And when it does go to site plan, and if it passes tonight, I just want to point out, too, to staff, that the one resident has asked if the row of trees between the fence line and the townhomes, which is in that three-meter buffer, if they could be preserved just to give more of that natural buffer to those stacked townhomes. So for these reasons, I can't support this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Turner?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. I sit on the Planning Committee as well, and it was a tight vote, but I think there's a few things that need to be pointed out before this is voted on tonight. One, this development sits on a bus stop, so it has great transit. Another thing is, one of our mandates is to increase intensification, and that's what this project does, and I think it addresses it very well. The trees that were taken down on the site, I believe, are Manitoba maples. So I'd like to ask staff about that and the quality of those trees. And also, I believe that the tax increase for this intensification will be significant to our pockets in terms of our city coffers, and I think that's something we should consider. But could I ask staff about the trees that will be replaced, if they have any idea how many will be replaced? Because I know we do have a replacement policy. Thank you.
Ms. Faddeh?
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. With respect to the trees that were taken down on the site, they were taken down with a tree permit. When the tree permit was applied for, we looked at the tree inventory that was supplied by the owner, applicant at the time, and had Public Works Forestry staff review that as well to determine what compensation would be required for those trees to be taken down. We're currently holding a letter of credit to secure those trees and ensure that there's replanting done at the time of site plan control approval. With respect to the site plan control process, at the time that we have detailed plans outlining the grading and how the site will be laid out when they come forward for site plan, again, Public Works will review the tree inventory, and the arborist will determine the number of trees that need to be compensated for based on what's being removed, the classification of the trees within the arborist report that was prepared, and determine if the landscaping plan itself proposes enough trees to compensate for what's being removed. Alternatively, if there aren't enough trees or they can't all be planted on-site to compensate for what's being removed, we will be taking tree compensation so that other trees can be planted in the area to compensate for the trees to be replaced.
Okay, thank you. I hope they do replace a number of the trees. I would like, I will vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on item one. And that carries by a vote of seven to five. Item two is approval of applications for official plan and zoning bylaw amendment, 1572 Sunnyside Road. And that carries. Report Number 106 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. I rise now to present this report with four items from the EITP Committee for council's consideration.
Moved by Councilor Stroud, seconded by Councilor Allen, that Report Number 106 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So we have separated Clause Four for Deputy Mayor Bohm's declaration of pecuniary interest. Would anyone like items one, two, or three separated? Councilor Stroud?
Item three, please.
Okay. So we will first vote on item one and two together. Item one is the on-street accessible parking options for residential users, and item two is approval of updated pedestrian crossing guidelines. And that carries. Item three, approval of parking rate review recommendations. Councilor Stroud?
Thank you. I separated this for the purpose of asking a couple of pertinent questions that came up at committee that I thought the public in general might want to hear about. We're talking about parking. Everybody has, you know, been in contact with our policies in one way or another. And the one suggestion at committee from more than one source, from the public and from committee members, was to make better utilization of the parking supply that we have. There could be some system through either an online app or some other technological advance to point residents in the direction of the available supply, wherever it happens to be, in real time. And I'm wondering if staff could give us a similar answer as we had in committee about that subject.
Ms. Kidd?
Through you, Your Worship. The report does identify that within the next four to five months, we will develop a technology plan for parking services. And the technology plan will look at, there's a number of technological options that are available. We need to understand what those options are, and we need to assess them. There are parking apps that appear from the brief amount of review that we've done to date that are available to allow you to pay by cell. And those apps also generally show the number of parking spaces that are available, but not in real time. So the addition of a real-time feature, which would be really helpful, is a very expensive option. So what we've said is that as part of the technology plan that we'll develop, we'll come back with information on that by the end of the first quarter.
So, and I'm looking forward to that information. Thank you. And I thought it very interesting at the time, because obviously it makes perfect sense that the, that if everyone that's looking for parking can be told quickly and easily where there is parking, it would only be when we're at 100% capacity that there, no parking could be found. And sort of along those lines, I wanted to ask you a second question about the usage rates and the two lots that have the, you've probably noticed, members of the public, the little signs in front of Chown and Hanson that say number of spaces free at any time when you're driving by. Very useful. That's what sort of gives me the idea of technological advances. Tells you how many spaces are open, and so you know that you can go in that lot. It's unfortunately only visible, like, right in front of the garage. And I'm wondering if there's any way to tabulate those numbers in sort of, and get a report about the total usage, and what times of day especially we're at full capacity? And if you could just, first of all, yes or no, is there a way of having full usage data released to the public? And then the second part is, at what time of day does it tend to be at 100% capacity?
Through you, Your Worship. Yes, we can provide council report on the usage data that we collect at the Chown and Hanson. Those particular parking lots are easier for us to collect because they have gated systems. So there's a counting mechanism that accounts for every vehicle that goes in, every vehicle that comes out. And so we can identify from that the peak period and the peak occupancy, and that's information that we can share. The two garages, even though they're in close proximity to each other, tend to serve slightly different purposes. The Chown during the Monday to Friday period primarily provides... The Chown during the Monday to Friday period primarily provides for visitors to Hotel Duke Hospital. And so the peak period there tends to be daytime, I think Tuesday from the last study that we did, and around eleven o'clock in the morning, and that's probably just the overlaps of appointments, people arriving early and people having appointments that stayed longer. The, the Hanson, and, and the, the Chown tends to run ninety-two, ninety-three percent at peak occupancy. The Hanson Garage is a little bit different. It, it doesn't, it doesn't have quite as high a demand. It tends to run in the mid to high eighties, and serves a different type of, of motorist. And I can't recall off the top of my head, but that's information that we could certainly share in a council report.
Thank you. Very helpful. Just gonna throw this out there, you don't need to respond, but it, it might be a, a good interim solution while we're waiting for technology, to have notices in downtown where the on-street parking is available, which is often at a hundred percent capacity, especially on Princess Street. Did you know that Hanson Garage at this location often has vacancies? Because you're saying it, it may run up to eighty percent, but that implies that there would usually be space at Hanson, and maybe we could just have little signs on the, on the meters on Princess Street pointing people in that direction. I'm sure, especially for visitors, that, a, a lot of people may not know about the Hanson Garage, and, and maybe we could get it up to a hundred percent usage. Could need answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I'm not against, in this, the, the fine increase. I guess what I'm struggling with here is, is the actual per-hour increase, and I'm wondering if we truly understand when we increase the rate, are we, are we discouraging people from going downtown because of that? Because some of the comments that I've heard from people is, well, what's the point in going downtown? You just have to struggle to find a parking spot, then you're gonna have to pay for it, then you gotta run back out and refill your meter. So some of the things I'm wondering is, you know, is this, do we truly understand sort of the economic impact of this? I understand that we have to raise fees and fines and stuff. Do we understand the other side of that? Are we potentially having a net negative impact on, on businesses in the downtown overall with this? So if staff could comment on that, please.
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, your worship. The consultant that we hired, BIA Group, that was a question that was posed to them by, at, at the public consultation, and, and we actually had two specific sessions with members of the Downtown Business Association. And the rates that we're proposing are not, the consultant felt that they weren't at the point, even, even when we implement the changes, that they would actually discourage. And what's more important to people is that they can find a parking space without having to, to drive around and around on lots or, or become frustrated. So it was less about the price, and there wasn't, there wasn't a major concern on that.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Just very quickly, I think we have to realize, first of all, it's my understanding, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but the BIA are comfortable with, with, with the recommendations that are before us. And the other thing is, it isn't just talking about an increase. The report talks about how we can find a way to sustain our parking reserve fund, because we're going to need to use it to create necessary parking throughout the Princess Street core area. And therefore, at the current rate, that reserve fund, I don't believe, would be sustainable. Perhaps staff can speak to that. So it's short-term pain for long-term gain, I think, but perhaps staff can speak to that.
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, your worship. The BIA is generally supportive of the recommendations that we're making. Of course, they would, they would prefer that we didn't have to increase parking rates, but through the work that we did with them, they certainly understand that parking is a cost center in, in Kingston, and that the parking infrastructure that we have today is very expensive to maintain. They have an appreciation for that, and, and, and we do maintain it to a very high standard. They also appreciate that as surface lots are developed, ultimately, there will be a requirement for replacement parking, and the cost to fund that will come from the parking reserve fund. So they understand that there, that, that the parking rates are also an investment in being, being able to provide new supply. They, they had, they had the opportunity to have input to the rates and the timing, and we gave them options to, to consider and mull over. And ultimately, one of the things that they asked for was that we not increase the rates in the main downtown area until two thousand and nineteen, until such a time as the Princess Street reconstruction work is complete, and it will be, it will be completed in two thousand and eighteen. So, so they were grateful that we were able to find a way to support that recommendation. And they put forth some other recommendations around balancing out the customer service aspect and, and use, you know, exploring the technology and trying to find ways to, to ensure that the parking service remains user-friendly. So they realize it's not just about cost.
Thank you.
Counselor Hutchison.
Just along that, and I know you explained this in the report and that count, committee where we heard about it, I was wondering if you could just let the public know what the type of costs that are involved in the parking supply, and what we're expecting to have to spend over the next five to ten years, so they understand why these rates are rising, and why we're having to make these adjustments.
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, your worship. The consultant worked with us, we developed a, a financial model for future expenditures over a fifteen-year period. Included in the model, we had costs to cover regular repairs and maintenance, which, which totaled about twenty million dollars. That repair and maintenance would include concrete repairs and, and sealant repairs and, and everything we need to do to, to ensure the integrity of our, of our structures, primarily the Chown, Hanson, and Bruce garages, upgrades to our parking technology. So we have technology today, we call them meters. There's a lot of, of electronics involved in, in the meter systems, and so we need to regularly maintain those, and, and we need to upgrade them as we go. So, so that was about twenty million, and then there was about, well, there's, I think it was twenty or thirty million, but generally looking at new supply. So looking out over a fifteen-year horizon, understanding that we will have expenditures for replacement supply in the downtown area as the north blocks develop, and also taking into consideration land purchases, and ultimately, perhaps even some sort of structured parking solutions in the Williamsville area as, as that area develops along the Williamsville and Princess Street corridor.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote on item three. And that carries. Item four, water sewer line warranty program. Counselor Hutchison.
I would like to, the motion, and I found this at camp, committee too, was rather scant on its explanation. So this relates to flooding basements and things that affect people in a number of districts in the, in the citywide. So I was wondering if staff could give an explanation of how this water sewer line warranty program would work and what it is attempting to address. Please.
Mr. Keach.
Yeah, through you, your worship, just a very quick description. It is an insurance program, and it is an insurance program for the homeowner's portion of the water line that runs into the house, or the sewer line that runs away from the house. And that portion is usually from the property line to the, to the foundation. It covers repairs for things such as frozen water lines that we experienced, unfortunately, a couple of years ago, sewer blockages, leaks, those types of things. It does not cover a full replacement. It, it is just repairs. What we are looking for here today is to council approval, and, and, and we're here, this, this is a bit different normally utilities Kingston doesn't bring things that we're looking at purchasing to council, but this we see as a bit of a, a change in policy, hence it went to the, went to the committee. But looking for approval to issue an RFP to see which provider of such a program would offer, I guess, the, the best insurance proposal to residents of the city of Kingston. One of the reasons that we are looking at this is, I think most homeowners probably don't realize the responsibility that they have until they have a problem with it. And again, we experienced that quite, quite a bit a couple of winter goes when we, we had the lines freeze up. And when they do get into these situations, it can be extremely expensive. So again, just, just basically an insurance program that typical insurance doesn't cover. We would look to administer it and promote it at Utilities Kingston, but it would be by a third-party provider. There are other municipalities in the province that currently use this, not a lot, but there are some. And, you know, we think that it could be of significant benefit to, to some of our customers.
Thank you. I just want to say that I fully support this initiative to look into this. As numbers of counselors will know, over the last ten or fifteen years, there've been numbers of occasions where, you know, large storms have flooded into basements, and there are always leaks, and there are situations where the infrastructure leading to a house breaks down, and the homeowner doesn't realize just how expensive that can be until they're into it. There are strange situations in the, especially in the downtown, where the property line is actually inside the house, so it's a question of who's responsible, you know? Inside the house, and, and the part, the homeowner is actually responsible for is a little further back, obviously. So this, but it's not just in the downtown where this happens, where we've had these floods have been sometimes greater in Lakeview area, and sometimes greater in Kingstown downtown. It all depends on where the rain falls hardest. And so I just think this sort of thing is really important, and it gives a chance for us to have a, a, a good and trusted utility administer a program that will be beneficial to everyone who wants to sign up for it. So I think it's a step forward and, and an add-on to the type of programs we've developed to try to solve these problems over the last ten years or so. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on item four. And that carries. We have nothing under committee of the whole. We have several information reports. If you have a question, just raise your hand as I read through them. Number one is pending and committed residential development supply, January first, two thousand sixteen to June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Counselor Neal.
Yes, just for the public to hear it as well, there's a question I asked at planning that perhaps can be addressed. It appears from the report that we received that, in fact, there's been a decline in residential units in the last year or two. Am I right in saying that, for instance, University Suites is going to the OMB this week or next? If that gets resolved, then, in fact, there'll be a total reversal of what appears to be a decline in units and building permits to actually a modest increase. Is that accurate?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So it, it is absolutely correct that, actually, it started last year where we've started to notice the significant decline in terms of building permit for residential development, and that has continued, actually, it's, it's worse. It's a lot worse in two thousand and sixteen than it was in two thousand and fifteen, and we'll have further conversations on that in the budget deliberations, because somewhere we need to make some changes. In terms of your question, Counselor Neal, the decline right now is showing basically in, in all areas of residential development, so it's not just the multiple units. The project that you're referring to, yes, it is at the OMB and would make a significant difference, but would not necessarily have an impact in terms of the other areas where we're seeing single detached homes, as well as some of the other residential developments that have seen a decrease over time. So it would help, but it would not necessarily get us back to where we were about three years ago.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Hutchison.
As I read this, it seemed, though, depends on how you calculate some of these, according to the tables here, the, it seems that we have total supply, the total lifespan of all units is fifteen point four years, and measured another way, it's six point two years. Are we well, are we in a comfortable situation in terms of maintaining the urban growth boundary based on this study?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the answer is, is yes, in terms of the supply that's showing there. One thing that I do want to raise with council is that the developments that are identified in this report doesn't mean that they're all gonna happen, obviously, at the same time. Some will take years. Some may not actually happen as well. We've seen that where there are, there are projects that are planned but don't actually come through. So these numbers obviously change and evolve, and that's why we want to make sure that we update you every six months, so you keep track of what's happening in terms of development and growth.
Thank you.
Counselor Stroud. Okay. So information report number two, delegated authority heritage approvals. Counselor Stroud.
Yes, I'd like to ask a question on behalf of a constituent. If staff could just remind the Chair of Heritage if this, if these items also get reported to the Heritage Committee, because I, I remember seeing similar reports at Heritage, and where does that stand at this point?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the information is typically reported to council, and that's laid out actually in, in our procedure. Having said that, we have in the past reported information as well to the Heritage Committee, because there's been obviously interest from members of the Heritage Committee. We can definitely do that, as well as report the information to council, because it is information only. We can do that, we can provide that information to the Heritage Committee.
Thank you. I did notice this item wasn't on tomorrow's Heritage Kingston agenda, and that's sort of what prompted the question from the constituent. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, number three, Rita Crest Home Accreditation Canada results. Okay, we have one information report from a member of council, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, September Board Meeting. Counselor Allen.
Thank you. The, the report's there for you to read, and so I'll just, through your worship, share a couple of quick comments about it. This was my first meeting as a board member with FCM, and so it was a little bit of getting my feet wet. And in a couple of weeks, I'll be bouncing back between budget deliberations here in Ottawa for advocacy days, where I'll be working with colleagues from across Canada to advocate further for infrastructure funding, national housing strategy, rural broadband, if that's one that's close to me, and working on national initiatives associated with that. In terms of infrastructure, one of the key things that I wanted to make sure council was aware of is that the platform that FCM has taken with the federal government, and if you heard the announcement today, it seems to be coming out quite well, that more infrastructure funding is needed, and the federal government is responding, is that it comes out in a predictable, allocation-based way, allowing municipalities to choose how to direct that funding, rather than in an application manner on a project-by-project basis, sort of like how we deal with the gas tax, and ridership, and, and other kinds of approaches. So we have an allocation and targets that are met with the government, but then we are able to choose the projects that meet those targets, rather than submit the projects themselves and compete on uneven ground with other municipalities. themselves and compete on uneven ground with other municipalities. National housing strategy, a lot of work's been done in terms of that and there were submissions made by the, by the FCM committee and that's been working very closely with that. And you can see the 10 points that I just put out here, not just expanding, but making sure that we rebuild and renew the housing stock that we have and increase the rental housing stock in general. There's a focus on ownership that exists out there and what we need to do is also make sure that there's an adequate rental supply in every market. So those are things that FCM's been focusing on and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to talk with you about it offline. I'll address the Canada 150 thing when the motion comes up associated with that.
Thank you. So we have no miscellaneous business, so we will move on to new motions. Number one, moved by Councillor O'Sannick, seconded by Councillor George, that the following resolution approved by council on September 6th, 2016 be reconsidered. The council endorse in principle the concept plan is presented as Exhibit B at the September 6th, 2016 council meeting and direct staff to undertake the implementation of the concept development plan through the submission of applications for all necessary planning approvals as it relates to the affordable housing development and parkland block. And the council directs staff to provide a notice to declare surplus in accordance with the city's public notice and disposition policies, the portions of the site not to be used for future parkland. And the council directs staff to negotiate the sale of a portion of the property to Kingston and Frontenac Housing Corporation and report back to council on property negotiations. And that staff report back to council after public consultation. And the council directs staff to undertake the necessary planning for the future development of the new park block and include the cost for those planning services as part of the 2017 capital budget for consideration. So because this is a motion of reconsideration, the mover, Councillor O'Sannick, has the floor. She can provide a brief statement to council about why we should reconsider and then at that point, we will call the vote. Councillor O'Sannick?
Thank you, your worship. I had originally thought that council had done a good thing on September 6th by buying the site and approving staff's plan for the housing to go on that site, but since that night, we've seen the public opposition, the 900-plus petition, we've, I think we've seen the clear message that the community around that site, they want no less green space than what is currently there, which is actually 75%. The entire site's only 1.49 acres and thinking about that some more, there's just not enough space to have the 75% green space as well as affordable housing and the private housing development as well. Just to close off, I know that no park is free, every park has a price. That was really good quotes that you gave, Councillor Stroud. But the developers in Williamsville over the past few years, they have financially contributed to the Parkland Reserve Fund in lieu of providing parkland on their development sites. And I think maybe that this is a worthy cause then, just to use the Parkland Reserve Fund for the site and knowing that it will take several years for the Parkland Reserve Fund to build up again with further developments as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote and just a reminder, it would take a two-thirds vote to pass. And that loses by a vote of seven to six. So on to new motion number two, moved by Councillor George, seconded by Mayor Patterson. Whereas recent polling conducted on behalf of the Association of Municipalities of Ontario indicates 76% of Ontarians are concerned or somewhat concerned property taxes will not cover the cost of infrastructure while maintaining municipal services. And 90% agree maintaining safe infrastructure is an important priority for their communities. And whereas infrastructure and transit are identified by Ontarians as the biggest problems facing their municipal government. And whereas a 10-year projection, 2016 to 2025, of municipal expenditures against inflationary property tax and user fee increases shows there to be an unfunded average annual need of $3.6 billion to fix local infrastructure and provide for municipal operating needs. And whereas the $3.6 billion average annual need would equate to annual increases of 4.6%, including inflation, to province-wide property tax revenue for the next 10 years. And whereas this gap calculation also presumes all existing and multi-year planned federal and provincial transfers to municipal governments are fulfilled. And whereas if future federal and provincial transfers are unfulfilled beyond 2015 levels, it would require annual province-wide property tax revenue increases of up to 8.35% for 10 years. And whereas Ontarians already pay the highest property taxes in the country. And whereas each municipal government in Ontario faces unique issues, the fiscal health and needs are a challenge which unites all municipal governments regardless of size. Therefore, be it resolved that this council supports the Association of Municipalities of Ontario in its work to close the fiscal gap so that all municipalities can benefit from predictable and sustainable revenue to finance the pressing infrastructure and municipal service needs faced by all municipal governments. Councillor George?
Thank you, your worship. Well, it's a, it's a very doom and gloom whereas, a number of whereas clauses. And this is something that my friends at AEMO have been working on now for about a year. We've had a number of meetings trying to address what potential revenue sources we could look at as municipalities without the continued use of our, our residential, commercial and industrial tax base. And it has been a challenge. So what we're asking for in this particular motion that's before you tonight is to offer support for AEMO to continue to devise a plan, which you will at a later date be informed what that plan and presentation will be to the province of Ontario, in asking for potential means by which we can look at revenue sources other than through our tax base. And at this point in time, I think that most of you are aware that the city of Toronto has a number of revenue tools that they have the ability to utilize, which no other municipality in the province of Ontario has access to. For example, they have the ability to put a, put an increase on gas tax, liquor tax. I believe they also have the ability on land transfer tax to put increases there as well. Not that we would give consideration to doing that, but it would be nice to have tools available to the municipality of all sizes because there's 444 municipalities involved. We all have different arguments for and against, but we recognize that the majority of municipalities out there could use some, if not all, of the potential tools that may be offered to them by the province if we can get them to agree to change the legislation to allow us the same opportunities that they now currently provide to the city of Toronto. So this is just a start to show that we support and we're hoping all municipalities are going to support allowing AEMO to move forward and at least send a message to the province that all municipalities are supporting AEMO in their move forward to try and identify and come up with some discussion and approval with the province that allows us some, some tools that can allow us to look at other revenue sources. Because as we know, and it was already stated in the whereas clause, we pay the highest residential taxes in the province of Ontario right across the country. And we just cannot continue to draw on our residential, commercial and industrial tax bases any longer. We have to look at other means of generating revenue for the use by the municipality. We're going to hear a lot of the good and the bad in the next couple of weeks when we start our budget discussions. I think any, most of us who sit on external committees and have been battling with budget implications know that we are trying very hard to keep budget costs down to what we have asked them to do, but it's not going to be sustainable. There's no way in the world it can be. We're just fooling ourselves and the members of the public by saying that we can, we can hold the tax increases. There are just growing needs in a community that's continuing to grow and the money has to come from someplace. So I'm hoping you will all support this so that in our meeting in November, I'll be able to go to that meeting and begin our work. We're having a Thursday evening committee of the whole and one of the, one of the discussions we're going to have is potential revenue tools and where we go from here. So we do need this support and I hope that you'll all give it your blessing here this evening. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. This is a very timely motion of critical importance for all levels of government. The closing of the fiscal gap that this motion is calling for is a concept that is right now being endorsed around the world by professional economists from all sides of the political spectrum. Many European countries have already instituted comprehensive policies to monitor and close the gap. In the US right now, there is a petition to pass the Inform Act, which has been signed by over 1,200 professional economists, including 12 Nobel laureates, because economists everywhere recognize that the tools used until now have been ineffective at demonstrating the problems that governments all over the world at every level have incurred concerning the fiscal gap. Net fiscal obligations refers not just to formal and informal commitments to future payments, but also to formal and informal commitments to future levels of taxation. The difference between these is the fiscal gap. The problem comes with nomenclature and the time horizons chosen. Note that I say the word chosen because as, this is what is at the heart of the problem. If we look at a time horizon for a particular expenditure or revenue that is too short, we can make the gap smaller by not counting all future costs. This sleight of hand allows anyone to calculate the fiscal gap to be whatever they want. And governments around the world have been doing this since the end of World War II. And probably did so because John Maynard Keynes, one of the architects of the New Economic Order, said, "In the long, in the long run, we're all dead." And this was interpreted to mean that we don't need to think too far ahead. In case, a case in point is the sell-off of Hydro One. It will lower the fiscal gap over the next two years, that is, until the next election, but it will widen the gap at longer time intervals. So where the left and the right may disagree about particular policies to lower the gap, economists from the left and the right are in consensus that lowering it is better for the public good. The first step is to identify the problem in terms of real cold, hard numbers and at the infinite horizon. The tool for this is called infinite horizon fiscal gap analysis. The infinite horizon gap tells us whether the government has, over an infinite horizon, enough receipts to cover its projected spending. It equals the present value of all projected future expenditures minus the present value of all projected future receipts. And it's important to emphasize the word all. It puts everything on the books regardless of nomenclature or limits. A positive fiscal gap means that the government is attempting to spend over time more than it can afford. Doing so violates what economists call the government's intertemporal budget constraints. Hence, a positive fiscal gap is a direct measure of the unsustainability of current fiscal policy. Eliminating the fiscal horizon, or sorry, eliminating the infinite horizon fiscal gap is a zero-sum game across generations. Hence, the fiscal gap tells us, tells us the fiscal burden that will be imposed on today's and tomorrow's children if current adults don't pay more or receive less from the government. Calculating the infinite fiscal horizon gap is relatively easy. It involves taking existing fiscal projections to an infinite level and then high school algebra to find the appropriate present value. Many governments do this already. Italy since 2008, since the 2008 crisis, has applied this and as of last year, actually achieved a tiny negative gap. This in spite of having a debt-to-GDP ratio of over 100%. This means that current Italians will bestow greater financial fiscal value on their children than their children will bestow on the current, on the current generation. The US, on the other hand, has an unofficial infinite horizon fiscal gap 16 times larger than its official debt in 2015. This means that future generations are hugely in debt to pay for current, for the current consumption of the current generation. In other words, the current generation is receiving far more value than it pays for and future generations will receive far less value than they pay for. This is a timely motion because Ontario needs to identify and likely close the fiscal gap. Likely, I say, because we don't know for sure what it is. We've seen in this motion some calculations with regards to infrastructure, but there's a lot more than just infrastructure to be concerned about.
Thirty seconds.
And this form of analysis should be done municipally too. And I expect to have some conversations about this soon with a lot of senior staff. So this is a very, very important initiative and I wholeheartedly support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neil?
Yes. First of all, I appreciate this motion coming forward, in part because we've all heard, I know that people, there is a piece of legislation called the City of Toronto Act, which empowers that city, gives them greater revenue potential, gives them more powers in many areas. I kind of facetiously call it the City State of Toronto Act because they're given powers that the rest of the province, municipalities in the rest of the province, don't share. And it makes it much more difficult for us to be able to do our jobs. It also frequently, I'm sure other members of council have had, people send us emails and say, "Toronto is doing this wonderful thing. Why isn't Kingston doing that?" Often it's because, under the municipal act, Kingston doesn't have the powers to adopt those often more progressive policies, whereas Toronto has been given those powers under, under the City of Toronto Act. So I totally endorse this and I'm hopeful that at the very least, this pressure on, on the provincial government will give them an opportunity to reflect on some of those powers they've transferred to, to one municipal government and ask the question, why not the, the rest of the municipalities? So I totally endorse this.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on motion number two. And that carries. Motion number three, moved by Councillor Allen, seconded by Councillor O'Sannick. Whereas the Federation of Canadian Municipalities has launched the official Canada 150 Community Leaders Network, inviting all municipalities to designate one or more individuals to represent them in the upcoming 150th anniversary of Confederation. And whereas participants in the Canada 150 Community Leaders Network will act to inspire civic action toward Canada 150 events in our community through social media and other means of communication, and will serve as touchpoints to share Canada 150 information across the national network in 2017 and beyond. And whereas the city of Kingston has planned multiple events and celebrations of Canada's Seswe Centennial Anniversary, and whereas Kingston has a great number of active community members and leaders who represent the diversity and passion of our community, therefore be it resolved that Kingston City Council issue a call for nominations for community leaders to participate in the FCM Canada 150 Community Leaders Network as representatives of the city of Kingston. And that nominations be directed to the city clerk's office no later than November 15th, 2016, in order to be confirmed by the nominations advisory committee at their November meeting and announced by city council on December 6th, 2016. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, your worship. And counsel, I'll be as brief as I can with this. The motion speaks for itself. Next year is the 150th anniversary. We're already engaging in celebrations that we're going to have, planning all sorts of events here in Kingston. And what we want to do is participate in this network in such a way that we can share those events, the happenings and celebrations with other communities and also hear about them through the people who represent us as community leaders. FCM doesn't have a whole lot of details about who they'd like to see as leaders. We could send one person or we can nominate 10 people or more. It's, it's up to us. In fact, they encouraged every councillor to nominate someone from their district, which I'd like to encourage each of you to do, as somebody who can best demonstrate the act, the active nature of our city, the engaged nature of our city and the great leaders that we have that sit outside this table, because there are so many of them that enable us to do what we do already. A lot of it's going to be on social media. There's a lot of communicating that's going to take place through social media and other forms of internet communication. So whoever gets nominated- gets nominated and, and should be relatively fluent or able to work on Facebook and Twitter and Snapchat, I guess, or Instagram, everything that people are using these days, or some of the things that people are using these days. We're looking for diversity and we're looking for anyone to nominate themselves or to nominate someone else that they think might fit in this. The idea is that then these nominations would come to nominations' committee and we would give them a seal of approval for council to then announce and celebrate as sort of a kickoff as our first capital community leaders here in Kingston. So that's what we're hoping to do with this motion, is collect people from the community and get council involved in collecting that. But anybody in the community certainly can nominate someone, and it would be really great to have a real legion of community leaders to represent us as part of this. So I'll, I'll leave my comments there.
Thank you. We will call the vote on motion number three. And that carries. Number four, moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Stroud. Whereas 671 Brock Street is proving to be much more controversial than anticipated, and whereas council in their role as guardians of the public good wish to advance certain public interest principles, priorities, goals, and actions as outlined in our strategic plan, and whereas some of these public interest principles, priorities, goals, and actions include achieving sustainable practices for delivery of services, encouraging citizens' engagement, considering strategic cost-saving measures, considering fiscal responsibility, addressing community expectations, increasing assessment growth, increasing affordable housing, promoting open government, planning for a livable city, and planning for fiscal and operational sustainability. And whereas the future possibility of more school closures is an opportunity that is better realized with facts, public consultation, and formal policy, therefore be it resolved that staff devise a process for a temporary advisory working group comprised of six members of the public from different areas of the city to be chosen by the nominations advisory committee, and that one such working group exists to provide input on all former school sites that are expecting to be coming available for acquisition within the next two years, and that this working group with guidance from city staff will look at best land use based on the values, priorities, objectives, goals, and financial constraints of the City of Kingston, and that this working group will examine the best balance of public and private interests for the neighborhood and the whole city over the short and long term, as well as the feasibility of alternative, creative, and innovative methods of financing land uses, and that staff report back with a formal process to create a working group that will provide input on future school sites available for acquisition at the November 15 council meeting. Counselor McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. So sometimes policy that has worked in the past does not seem to work in the present. That's probably in some cases because the expectations of people have advanced. And if policy does not keep up, then we get a tumult. Tumults are not all in themselves bad, and when they, especially when they call attention to deficiencies in policies, and then we, the policymakers, adjust policies to address the concerns that led to the original tumult. Tumultuous times can be bad or good depending on what is done about them. In the case of 671 Brock Street, we had a policy that had worked. We had acquired school property before, but this time there was also great dissatisfaction. And in this atmosphere, when passions or emotions are inflamed, it is often difficult to see the other concerns. As the recent petition with nine, with 1010 names reminded us that the provincial policy statement calls for a full range and equitable distribution of publicly accessible parkland, I'd like to point out that equity is a multi-dimensional idea. Surely there is the possibility that absolute parkland could be one measure of that. There's also accessibility to that parkland, how close you are to that land, and the relative size of the actual district. So for example, Williamsville is in fact the smallest geographical district, so it might stand to reason that it would be on the lower end of the amount of park space. There are other districts that may have other forms of equity that are deficient, and this should have been, this should be taken into consideration. Williamsville is short in at least one of them, but it's also maybe not short in other measures of equity. And we are all naturally attracted to the measures that best suit us, but we do not need to be equi, we do need to be equitable, and as we are spending public money from around the whole city to increase city-owned parks, Williamsville is benefiting. But there are other considerations. If we prodically blow our budget on one park, what does that do to equity for the rest of the city? Many other opportunities will be foreclosed without prudent financial planning. And what about other public goods and strategies, such as what we've just described here? We need to apply our reason to achieve highest and best social goods, keeping open our awareness of the totality and the broader dimensions of the public and common good. This motion is designed to further expand deliberative democracy, a process which allows citizens to help identify common public goods through consultation before even the initial decisions are made. That's the important part, even before the initial decisions are made. We have, for example, 90 days after we express an interest to make that decision. In that time, there's an opportunity to consult with the public before the decision is made. I believe that if all the facts had been seen ahead of time, if miss and/or incomplete information had not been disseminated, we could have had a better, more acceptable result in the 671 Brock Street case. Going forward to do better by the people, this motion is meant to have the people contribute beforehand on grand strategy for the acquisition of school land and take into account the widest spectrum of values and concerns, and help to inform us, us councillors, of the balance that we will ultimately have to make with many, with these decisions. A balance that we, that we'll consider best land use based on the values, priorities, and objectives, and goals, and financial constraints of the City of Kingston. Balance, a balance of the public and private interests of the neighborhood and the whole city, including in the short term and the long term. This motion will help inform us of public concerns even before the initial buy or not buy decisions are made. And in this way, more correct and complete information could be disseminated and better policy decisions made while engaging the public with the facts, the truth, and all the relevant information. So for that reason, we're moving this in the hopes that we never have this kind of a tumult again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal?
Yes, thank you very much. I did leave an amendment with the clerks, and I'll explain. It's a simple amendment, and it was duly moved and seconded by Counselor Ossanik. The whereas 671 Brock Street is proving to be much more controversial than anticipated, my motion is to withdraw that statement. And I'll explain why.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend that's been put forward by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. I think it would be nice to have that in writing, but I think...
It is in writing.
Oh, it is in writing. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So essentially to delete the first whereas clause?
Exactly.
Counselor Neal, you have the floor.
Yes. I know that the mover and seconders say that it's proving to be much more controversial than anticipated. I have to say that it, to, to vote for this motion with that statement would not be accurate. I believe we were, we, we heard from delegations that indeed it was a controversial issue. Anybody who lived in Kingston 12, 14 years ago will recall when there was a proposal to sell Memorial Centre parkland for private development to help fund the K-Rock Centre. There was a huge community uproar right across the city with that. So the, the idea that it, it's a surprise that this is contentious at all, I think, is, is, isn't accurate. And plus, I believe a motion needs to stand on its own. It shouldn't be the first whereas clause because 1,010 people signed a petition, therefore let's strike a committee. I'm not sure if I'm going to vote for this after I've heard...
Point, point of order?
Other than to say that...
So, so, so hold on. So point of order is, is upheld. Please, at this point, Counselor, you'll have a chance to speak to the motion as a whole, but just speak to that one whereas clause, please.
Okay. I believe that we need to consider this in, in isolation, not because of a decision we made before. And for that reason, I don't believe, although I'll listen to the other discussion, I don't believe I'll be able to support this motion.
Okay. So anybody else on the motion to amend only, please? Okay, so we will call the vote then on the motion to amend. Again, this is to strike the first whereas clause from the motion. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 12 to 1. Counselor Neal, you have the floor. You have 4 minutes and 15 seconds on the clock.
Excellent. Thank you very much. As I said, I'm, I'm having a little bit of difficulty on this because as I read this, and I'll ask staff, a lot of what's being called for with this kind of supercommittee that's being set up, in fact, would be information that an appropriately organized public engagement, public meeting, especially in the affected neighborhood, would gather this information. To establish a committee to, to consider these things, I think, would defeat the opportunity or possibility of having more community and more neighborhood input, which I will say again was sorely lacking at 671 Brock Street, but it isn't lacking in our policies or in our, our recommended, recognized public meeting strategy. So for that reason, unless I see a compelling reason, otherwise, I don't believe I can support this motion. The principles, priorities, goals, and actions that are included here, in fact, are all established policies that we already embrace as a council. The one concern that I have especially for this is the feasibility of alternative, creative, and innovative methods of financing land uses. That, to me, sounds like we're requesting, in almost all situations, that our staff or this committee to seek out ways to flip property potential, that is, potential affordable housing land or potential parkland, both of which are community benefit aspects of purchasing lands like schools. So unless I'm convinced in the next two or three minutes, otherwise, I don't believe I can support this motion as it now stands.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. Well, Counselor Neal, I'm not going to try to convince you because I'm confused as to your motivation. You made an amendment to, to, to a motion that implied that with that amendment you would be able to support it, but then you turned around and said that you probably wouldn't. So I'm not going to try to convince you otherwise.
Point of order?
My point of order is this. I'm never going to...
No, 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 no. That's not a point of order. You can't use a point of order to reignite a debate about what you said when you had the floor. So, good try, but Counselor Stroud, you have the floor.
Yeah, so back to the motion itself, and I'll be brief. I won't use my five minutes. So what this does, just look at the first, be it resolved clause. That's really the main part. So a temporary advisory working group for the purpose of, of getting the public involved in, in creating policy for school acquisition or possible school acquisitions. In other words, to, to see the forest and not just the trees, like each individual... Are you okay, Counselor Neal? Are you going to let me speak? Okay. Each individual potential school acquisition is coming to us chronologically, one at a time, and we're in the situation where we've actually potentially blown our whole budget on the first one that came up, or actually the first two or three in the last, in the last couple of years. Or so it may appear to the members of the public. Whereas if we had a group to look at the larger picture of, okay, so where are the needs in the entire city? Where's, how can we get something equitable? And how can we address it with, with an overall acquisition policy that would make sense? We wouldn't be sort of in this position of having to argue for and against each particular acquisition. I mean, it stands to reason that the local residents of each, near each site will have strong opinions each time, but we need to separate that from the overall policy. We don't have an active policy for school acquisitions, and there's a lot of them coming up. They seem to be coming up very quickly. There's an ongoing park process right now with the limestone board. There will be more coming. There will be sites coming up that are more significant than any of the ones that we've seen so far. So we heard from the, from the members of the public on, on the last file that they weren't consulted, and that was part of the reason that they were ticked off. And they weren't consulted, this addresses that. And we don't have a, a policy that looks at the whole picture. We have, we're just looking at one at a time. And of course, all the other reasons are already in the motion. So just think about that. This is an opportunity for six members of the public from different, different areas of the city to get, get involved in the essentially staff-directed conversation of coming up with a coherent policy for land acquisition with many fiscal restraints. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Holland.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I guess I just want to start with a question regarding, the name, the acronym escapes me at the moment, but the committee that was to be doing more strategic work looking at the school board and municipal issues. Because maybe somebody remind me where we're at with that committee, or what it's called.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that group still meets, actually, our, our next meeting will need to be scheduled before the end of the year. The meetings were reduced to two meetings per year. That is not necessarily the group that would be looking at these properties strategically because the school boards have already made their decisions to dispose of the schools, so they don't particularly have an interest anymore in the school site. So that then becomes a city responsibility. And yes, there are multiple school sites that will become available, and we know that the city doesn't have the financial capacity to acquire all of these sites. So difficult decisions are going to have to be made, and I'm sure that each neighborhood will want the city to buy the former school and, and turn it into a park. And at, at the end of the day, if that's, you know, where council wants to go in terms of policy, then we will need to identify some significant financial contribution to that approach. But I think what, what we're trying to achieve, my understanding in speaking to both councillors who brought this motion forward, is to try to get some public input before council makes a decision in terms of acquisition on the more strategic school site and how those can be used and financed.
Thank you. So I agree with Counselor Stroud and Commissioner Hurdle's remarks regarding the need for a policy. Certainly, as a representative of a district where there are currently two schools that have been closed and potentially available to be, to serve the public in other ways, it's of great interest to residents in this area, in the area represented, to myself, that we find a way to approach the school acquisition question that is equitable. I don't know, however, that this, this working group advisory committee is the format that would best resolve that issue. I think, for example, some of, some of the reasons I'm cautious about this, recommend this, this motion, is that there's this regional component, which Councilor Stroud alluded to, 6 members of the community being asked to sit in an advisory committee are going to have strong feelings about areas that they live near, or, and just as we do as councilors, and that's one of the reasons that this discussion is, has become what it has become, because, of course, 1,000 people will sign a petition regarding a property that is right next door or behind them, and how that property is going to be used is of great concern. So, a policy is needed, for sure. This doesn't, at first glance, appear to be any more effective, and certainly no more democratic than the public consultation process that we have in place at this point, which we'd like to see enhanced. So, I don't have an amendment. I have, the fact that I have concerns about the impact of this motion and the, the problematic nature of, of this type of advisory group, is leading me to, to not want to support the motion as is, but to hopefully find a way to move forward with a policy sooner rather than, than later. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bohm.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I'm happy to, to agree with Councilor Neal and Councilor Holland on this. I see quite a few issues with it, the first one being that the temporary advisory working group, a lot of these groups, to be truly effective, can't really be temporary because, essentially, how do we know when these opportunities are going to come available? So, I mean, it becomes a temporary group that kind of continues on in perpetuity, because when do you end it? So, that's my fear with the, the temporary nature of that. Councilor Holland touched on the fact that 6 people from different areas of the city, okay, but there's, you know, 12 districts and we're a city as a whole, so how do 6 people from 6 districts represent an entire city effectively? You know, if, if certain people, you know, you could end up with 3 people from the downtown area, and 1 person from countryside, and 2 people from the west end, but there's a whole bunch of districts that aren't now kind of included in that. So, there's a little bit of a fear there as, you know, is it really equitable? Another concern I have with this is, is the cost of staff time to kind of, every time we come up with a motion like this, to have them go and develop some type of policy and framework and implement it and do all that. So, staff time is a valuable resource. I think staff's heard loud and clear that we need to do something to prevent kind of what happened on, you know, like 671 Brock Street, and, and I'm sure that there's a policy or there's a way that we can do that without throwing a lot of these kind of ideas out. Achieving sustainable practices for delivery of services, encouraging citizen engagement, these are all council initiatives, these are things we're, we're kind of doing already. I mean, promoting upper government, planning a livable city, that's strategic priorities. I mean, these are things that we're talking about every day, so I'm not sure that we really need to essentially craft another motion and direct staff to do this. We're already supposed to be doing this. This is, in a sense, kind of handing off our job and the role of staff to a temporary citizens' group, which we should be engaging all the time. So, I mean, in a sense, I think that this, that's one of the reasons, or many of the reasons, I, I can't really support this, and that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor George.
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, and there are people out there, that are out there that say that there's always the left versus the right on this council, but look at this, we've got Council Bohm, Council Holland, Council Neal, myself, all agreeing to the same thing. So, that's just something, and that's amazing. But anyways, I'm not going to rehash what the other 3 have said, I totally agree with them, and I just simply want to point out that if I'd had the opportunity to make the amendment that Councilor Neal had done, that's exactly the way to go about it, because if there's a potential for a recommendation getting through, the wise old councilors always know, try to get out of that recommendation as much as you can before it finally hits the floor for that final vote, so kudos to you, you did it right.
Deputy Mayor Bohm, will you take the chair?
Yes, Your Worship, and I recognize you.
Okay, so, just to make this vote really interesting and to kind of throw everyone off on, on who would vote with whom, I'm actually going to speak in support of this motion. I, I think that there, and I think actually Councilor Stroud said this well, that we need a, we need a big-picture vision, we need to talk about all these properties together, and we need to understand what our priorities are as a city. So, the issue was, and we saw this with the Brock Street property, there was great public input, understandably, very focused on their neighborhood, but we obviously have larger concerns about what else do we want to acquire, how are we going to finance that, what are our overall priorities? Now, I appreciate the concerns that come forward about this working group, and I would say, I would be concerned about this if this was replacing the existing public consultation and the process that we have in place, but I don't read it that way. I read it as a temporary addition to the existing public consultation that we have, giving this working group an opportunity to just provide an additional layer of input. So, this is not exclusive, it's not saying that whatever this working group comes up with, this is what we have to do, it's just an, it's an alternate forum to be able to provide some resident input on what is a very important and difficult issue. It's not to say we can't do that other consultation at a more neighborhood level. I think that this point needs to be made, though. Just because we don't always go with what a neighborhood asks us to do, doesn't mean that they haven't been heard. I think I can speak for everybody around this table. We heard everybody on the Brock Street issue, but we had to balance their concerns with that over larger, overarching strategy for the city as a whole. So, it's not about not listening, it's not about, it's about taking that into account, and I think that this is an opportunity to be able to balance, so we get that public input, both at a neighborhood level, but also at a city level. So, I think that there's actually some merit in this, so I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is Councilor Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is by a staff. This is a workable. I think-
It's blinking.
So, you can use Councilor McLaren's microphone.
We're in operation, for whatever reasons. I'd like to have staff, if, I understand staff has had a look at this motion, it's actually suggested some changes, so I'd just like to ask them if they think this is a workable concept and, and structure. Please.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, we, we have actually worked with both councilors involved with this motion, and, and it is a workable process. It's, it's a process that has staff, we, we would have to engage in terms of strategic review of all those properties, and what this adds is basically a working group of, of residents that will give us some feedback through that process. Once that's completed, it will be staff recommendation to council in terms of property acquisition. We're not going to do that any differently in the sense that we know property negotiations take place in closed session, and we would propose to continue to maintain that, and that would be part of the report that we would bring back on November 15. So, we did take a lot of time and, and worked actually with the real estate team to make sure that this could be implemented.
Thank you. I, I want to agree essentially with what the mayor said about this, and, and Councilor Stroud too, while acknowledging some of the concerns that have been expressed, I mean, they, I can understand if this was maybe a little simpler, they, some of the objections wouldn't have come up. But I just want to point out, make it maybe a little more amenable to some councilors. It's, what we have now is a situation where staff definitely has a view that they have worked through, that's what we expect them to do, on whatever purchases or actions we've, we've generally given them. This, to me, simply broadens that, the consultation to a wider public group. Now, is that as representative, representative as it might be? Well, here's the problem, we're a representative body, and every committee and agency we deal with is representative. Everybody doesn't get to have immediate say on any issue that comes before them, and so, in the end, we're directly or indirectly responsible, whether we actually control them or not, in some way, cases it seems. So, I don't think that's something we should be too concerned with, it's just another way of consulting the public. And to better, better inform proposals and reports that the staff will bring forward, because they've said, I think in a couple of places, they don't, they're not saying they're going to agree with this group, because they don't know what they're going to say, and they have to be responsible themselves, and we're not going to say we're going to agree with this group either. There's, we're going to have to make our decisions based on our best judgment. So, the problem as I see it is what happened with 671 Brock Street, is people were taken a bit by surprise because of the nature of the process. You know, we buy land in, and a decision done in camera, because if we don't, we bid up the price. People take advantage of it, and, or the potential is there, and so, it's actually protecting the general public interest to make those kinds of, certain types of decisions, in which land purchase is one, that protects the public interest. So, then we needed to, what this motion says is then we could have injected into the 90-day wait period consideration, at least from some public body that's specifically focused on this, and I think that's worth trying. And as long as, and the mayor's covered this, and staff has just confirmed, the public consultation process remains in place, because that is the most important one, in my view, because neighborhoods and districts, wherever the action is taking place, are most affected and the, the strongest opinions, one way or the other. So, I'm willing to support this, I'll be interested in see how it works out, it, and, but I think it's, we need something to inform this and broaden public consultation, and this is a worthwhile way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? So, Deputy Mayor Bohm, you've already spoken. Anybody that has- Well, well played, Deputy Mayor. Councilor Cannon.
Thank you, through you, as he dishes off a piece of paper to me. We are putting forward a motion, or, or, sorry, a amendment that reads that the temporary advisory group for, is a period of 1 year and consists of 1 member of each district, if possible.
Okay, can we just get that in, if, can we just give that to clerk so we can put that up on the screen? So, this is an additional action clause?
So, Mr. Mayor, while we're putting that motion up on the screen, basically, that paragraph would end up reading, therefore be resolved that staff devise a process for a temporary advisory committee for 1 year comprised of 1 member from each district, if possible, and then the remaining rest of that paragraph.
Okay, so, just while staff put that up, if everyone understands the nature of the amendment, so, Councilor Cannon, you have the floor.
I think the main motivation behind it is equal representation, similar to council. Having been on different groups and organizations within the city, sometimes the, people feel that they're not getting represented, and, and the, the portion about the year, I think that if it turns out that this is working and is a, does end up being a good group, then you can always extend it, but at least there's a deadline if it isn't working, or is a, there is an end date to it, and it could, it could be renewed if necessary.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
Yes, Your Worship, and I recognize you.
Thank you. So, just a, just a question to staff, in the way we would interpret the original motion, I, I almost, I guess I interpret this working group as, as having 1 or 2 meetings and then being done, is this, is, is the idea that, what do we mean by a temporary advisory working group?
Through you-
Commissioner Hurdle.
Mr. Mayor, so, I, I can't obviously speak for the members of council, but from our perspective, from a staff perspective, you are correct in the sense that the review is to look strategically at all the school sites that are going to be coming up, identifying which ones that the city may wish to acquire, because it's not going to be all of them, and then identify what potential land uses could be and how they could also be financed. So, that, once that work is complete, we wouldn't go back to that working group every time there's a negotiation on a property, that negotiation still takes place with council in closed session.
Okay, so, so, just to that point, so, the way that I've interpreted this motion is that this is creating a one-time group to have a broad, one-time discussion, feed that to staff, and then have that as one element, the discussion that we're going to have as council as these individual properties come forward. So, that's why I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this amendment, because it's almost implying that this is something we're going to be setting up in perpetuity, and to be honest, if that's what it is, then I, I can't support it. So, if that's the way the staff are interpreting it, I think I'm going to have to decline the support of that piece. The other thing is, to be quite frankly, I think that a working group of 6 people works way better than a working group of 12. It's a working group, it's 1 meeting, so, I don't think that, you know, I live in the west end, I live in Councilor Osannick's district right now, I used to live in Trillium District. I don't think that I need, you know, we need to have somebody, you know, from every single west and east end, you know, district and downtown district. I think, I think we understand the idea that we can get 6 people from a distribution of the city that can still provide those different perspectives. So, I appreciate the, the amendment, but I think that, given those concerns, that, that I won't be able to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on the motion to amend? Deputy Mayor Bohm.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. Based on some of the comments there, I do, I do think that 12 people could seem like a lot, but at the same time, you could end up with 6 people on this working group that are all from the downtown, so I guess that, that's kind of a real fear. Hearing from staff that it's a, it's a temporary working group, which could be 1 or 2 times, gives me a little bit more comfort with this, but at, at the same time, it's not really 100% spelled out in the actual motion itself, which was why I'm always leery about temporary groups and not having a sunset clause put into the actual motion itself, because I think that's how you end up with 36-plus committees over time, because they basically just evolve into something that is no longer a temporary advisory group, it just becomes a, well, we've existed for this long and we're just going to keep going because we have something to add. So, that's why, essentially, the background for this motion is there to just kind of clarify a few things, which we've now heard from staff.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to clarify that part of the motion is also asking staff to report back with a process, so a lot of the discussions that are happening right now in terms of the timeframe of, of the working group is something that we will address in the, the process, which will be a recommendation to council, as well as the distribution of the representatives, so that, that would be part of what we would look at and report back to council. So, if, if council wasn't comfortable with that process, they could always amend it when we report back on the 15th.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on the motion to amend? Councilor Sheldon.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just to check that these, this will be a public meeting, basically, that, what would, what we would be setting up is public. is going to have to grapple with, is the fact that, as has been alluded to, we will not be in a position to purchase every single one of these properties as much as members of the public might like to see that happen. So having people from all across the city engaged in what could be a form of a participatory budgeting session where residents are grappling with the same things that we're grappling with and coming up with proposals and solutions, I think there's just a lot more opportunity for a very innovative outcome and approach through the size of this group. So I will be supporting the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Next on my list is Councilor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will be very brief. I'm only going to talk to one item, and that's the size, because I was the one that recommended to the mover that we pick six as a group size. From my work as chair on a couple of committees, I know that, and being part of a transition team for Heritage that was a size six, I think it is much more likely that the discussion will get further into the different aspects with six members rather than 12, although I must admit that it does say if possible. And if you ask for volunteers from 12 districts and not every district volunteers, you might end up with a size of nine, which may not be a deal breaker. But that's the reason that the six is there. It does say from different areas of the city, so I disagree with Councilor Bohm, the assertion that it might be six members from the downtown. That, to me, would be contrary to the motion. I think staff would have to include that in their report on the process, as how would we define different areas of the city. And I think that having all from the downtown area would be impossible with this motion as it stands. Is that correct? I guess I'll ask a question.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct.
Yeah, so I guess I agree with Councilor Shell and the mayor that six is better than 12, and that's why we'll be voting against the amendment.
Anybody else on the amendment? Councilor Hutchinson.
Can we separate these two terms?
Yes.
Like I...
Yes, so we can separate them.
Okay.
They're two, really two different amendments.
I think one member from each district is unwieldy. It's only going to be for... But I can support the, for a period of one year, if staff answers this question, how long do you think this will take, this working group situation?
Commissioner Hurdle.
How long do you need to make it work?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So if we're able to have the committee in place in early 2017, we would anticipate that probably three to four months. And council is aware, obviously, of some of the school potential acquisitions that are coming up. So we do have a limited timeframe, and we should be taking all of those into consideration into this broader strategic review. So the time is limited.
Okay, so what I hear is they don't even need a year. So if we say a period for a year, we're totally safe, that they'll be able to get the work done. And as for the, I think I interpreted different areas of the city to mean like different areas, right? East, west, central. It's part of the nominations committee. That's the way I would see it. If somebody wants to make a motion, insert the word geographic in front of areas, I'm fine, but I think it's... What I was sitting here thinking as the chair of the nominations committee, I heard you, okay? And we'll do our best. And you notice that Kirk was covering himself off there in the way he phrased it, that if possible was his word, because sometimes we don't get enough people applying from all the different areas to be able to do it. But I think everybody on council, and certainly in nominations committee, probably heard what you want, and that makes sense. So I'll support for a period of one year, but I don't see, I don't find it compelling to make it 12. Thanks.
Councilor Neal.
Thank you. I'm glad that it's been separated because frankly, I think 12 is too large a number for an advisory committee. And I'd just like to remind everybody that we're the people who decide. We are the, we make up the nominations advisory committee. All that staff does is request applicants from across the city. And in all the, in the years that I was on the nominations advisory committee, we did take into account geographic representation, area representation. So with six makes that, frankly, a feasible number. For a period of one year, I'm comfortable with that because frankly, I think all working groups need to have sunshine, an end date established. Because otherwise, it's easy unintentionally for what was intended to be a working group to become a quasi judicial, or I'm sorry, quasi group that it becomes a standing committee. And I, so if we can separate this, I can support one aspect of it, but not the other.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, we will first take the vote on the motion, the first part of the motion to amend. So that would be to delete six members of the public from different areas of the city and insert one member from each district if possible. Please vote. And that loses by a vote of three to 10. Can I just see the motion to amend back up on the screen, please? So now we will call the vote on the second portion of the motion to amend. That's to insert after the word "group" the words "for a period of one year". Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 10 to 3. Okay, so we are now back to the motion now as amended with the second part of that amendment. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion as amended that has not already spoken to the main motion? Councilor McLaren, you have the last word. Okay. Okay, so we will then call the vote on the motion as amended. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 2. Okay. Are there any notices of motion? Councilor Neal, do you have a notice of motion?
I do indeed. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Stroud. Whereas Williamsville District currently has the lowest parkland per capita ratio in Kingston, and whereas even with the acquisition of 671 Brock Street, the local residents remain concerned about having adequate green space at that location, and whereas Churchill Park adjacent across Napier Street from 671 Brock Street is primarily occupied by permanent natural fixtures, that probably should say features, with no open space for ballgames and other play areas for children, and whereas the proposed housing developments at 671 Brock Street would need adequate parking, and whereas the current use of the block of Napier Street from Mack Street to Brock Street is that of a secondary road with low traffic volume, therefore be it resolved that staff examine the implications to traffic and local residents on closing that one block of Napier Street to motor vehicle traffic only, and report back in Q1 2017 with options that would increase the amount of parkland space as well as parking space for potential housing nearby.
Thank you.
Point of order?
Councilor Stroud.
There's a word missing in the second last, oh, that's right, the last whereas, after in, it should say between.
Okay, so we'll just, that's not really a point of order. We'll just say that that's noted, and we'll just try to get that fixed in time for the next agenda. I also have a notice of motion in light of the integrity commissioner report that was released today. It's moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm, that the following motion approved by council on September 20, 2016 be reconsidered. And that's the approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 223 Princess Street, that the application for a zoning bylaw amendment submitted by FOTEN Consultants Incorporated on behalf of Innate Developments Incorporated for the property municipally known as 223 Princess Street be approved, and that the subject cited 223 Princess Street be designated a Class IV area as per the Environmental Noise Guideline of NPC 300 of the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, subject to a related holding symbol being applied in the amending zoning bylaw, and that bylaw number 96-259 of the Corporation of the City of Kingston entitled Downtown and Harbor Zoning Bylaw of the Corporation of the City of Kingston as amended be further amended as per exhibit C to report number PC 16-85, and that in accordance with section 3417 of the Planning Act, no further notices required prior to the passage of the bylaw, and that the amending bylaw be presented for all three readings. Seeing no other notices of motion, Mr. Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, seconded by Councilor Cannon, that the minutes of special city council meeting number 2016-24 held Tuesday, September 27, 2016, and the minutes of city council meeting number 2016-26 held Tuesday, October 18, 2016 be confirmed. Moved by Councilor Neal, seconded by Councilor George, that bylaws 2 through 4 and 6 be given their first and second reading. Moved by Councilor Neal, seconded by Councilor George, that bylaws 2 through 4 and 6 be given their first and second reading. Moved by Councilor Turner, seconded by Councilor Osannick, that bylaws 2 through 6 be given their third reading.
Moved by Councilor Turner, seconded by Councilor Allen. Can we all vote?